All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of October 10th, 2023, to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brinkley.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Chris Phelps.
Yep.
McNally.
Here. Bill is still on his holiday to Italy and should be back, was it tomorrow or Thursday?
Sometime this week.
Okay, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proof of posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
All right, okay. Moving right along, the public comment. Does anybody want to talk about anything? Let's see, we have four people here. I'm not counting you because you're on here already, so. Last call. Okay, close this portion of the meeting. Move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right, Tim, you get it, I guess. Any comments, questions, issues, concerns? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Carries. All right, thank you. Next item up, President's Report. I want to talk about something, but it's really got to deal with you. So I'm going to hold off, Todd. It has to deal with the street. And so I'm going to just defer if you don't mind. All right? And with that, can we move on to Plan Commission?
Plan Commission, last night, we had Representative Jason from MSA. He was presenting the comprehensive plan. Prior to the Plan Commission meeting, there wasn't a public hearing to...
Public open house.
Oh, sorry, public open house. That public hearing was a different topic.
Yep.
Public open house to provide feedback on the plan. And then the only other thing that was on the agenda was a conditional use permit for Chuck Fiesel at the Main Street property. He still wants to put the apartments up above. That was tabled until further notice, until we get some more details from him.
Okay.
Crowd is here.
All right. Any questions for Eric, last night's meeting? Does that comport with your recollection, Chuck?
Yep.
All the way around? Okay. All righty, okay. Thank you, Eric. I'd like to call up Mr. Todd Lord. And if you can have a seat here. Todd?
Evening.
Our Director of Public Works, give us an update.
Todd Lord, Director of Public Works for Cambridge. Doing water main repair right now. So I'm asking people on Main Street to be a little patient because they were about eight feet off on the detection of where it was. And tomorrow, we're going to go in there and repair and shut down. And Dane County is going to stick around and they're going to help us. They're going to concrete the road. By Thursday morning, we should have the road up and running. Bobcat Exchange is happening tomorrow. And another thing is, I'd like to thank you and Lisa and Tammy at the budget thing because I almost felt like, you know, I hadn't, I've never done a budget thing like that before. And it was kind of, you helped me out a lot. You made me understand a lot more than I understood on that. So thank you very much. They're still working on the shed out there. We're on time for the pickups, for shrubs and such things. Working on trees tomorrow. I don't know exactly what, where their sections are, where they're working at that point, but they just kept the chipper on so they can keep going on that. Working on the L-RIP grant. I just got something, I noticed when I was at my desk, when I was picking this up, that I just got the cost for what it would cost to fix those roads and stuff like that. But I think we're going to get into that later or something.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Okay.
I was up at the hole on Main Street. And I had a, I just thought it would be, you know, a good idea to go down and visit with the merchants that were on both sides because I had heard that there was some serious flooding earlier this week. And there was one building that had some, and I, you know, it was, it looked like a dog had piddled by the softener and the floor drain. And so nobody, and I think I went to seven businesses and most of them didn't have any, they've been checking it and they knew when the water was off. But they appreciated you guys going door to door and letting them know. And they understand that that happens. And, you know, we've got a main that breaks and, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a problem, so.
And that's what they have building insurance for. Yep, if needed, yep.
So.
So Charles Fiesel reported that he got water in his basement. That's why he wanted us to know that that's why there's a bunch of stuff out back in his building. He is getting it out of the basement because he said there was water.
Yes, they went and inspected. Friday night, they were inspecting all the things and coming up with ideas on how to help them the best they could, you know, because you're not going to get, they didn't get the detector guy till Saturday. And even though he was off a little bit, I mean, he was only off eight, eight feet. That's pretty good because those mains are under blankets. They have a corrosive blanket control on them. So you can hear it here and you can hear it here, too. So it's really, I don't know how they do it, but he was close and it was starting to undermine underneath the road there where they, where he detected it. He came back and was able to detect it the second time around, so.
Are you going to be able to fix that? Where the curb and the ramp to the sidewalk, that area has sunk in quite a bit over in that corner. Is that something that would be done as part of this process or just?
That's...
There's a heck of a, it's sunk down. I know that's the sidewalk project, but...
Right, that's not Dane County. That's Dane County's doing the road and they're doing us a really good favor by going ahead and waiting for us to finish that job. And they're going to do it, make sure that it's done tomorrow night. They said even if they have to go into the night with it, they're going to make sure it's done. So that way, we can pull off the, we can pull it and open up that road by Thursday morning. And then homecoming is Friday, so. Phew. And then we'll be working with, we're working with Tony, right? Tony is the police officer for the schools. We're working with him. He's got a map for us to put all the things up. So we already have all the detour signs up, so we just have to redirect them in the places that they have to go.
Well, I did want to commend you for getting out and seeing the businesses and being in there and explaining the situation. And that goes a long way. So I didn't hit everybody, but I hit the ones that were by the...
Yeah, on Monday, there's not a lot of businesses open. Because we were going around trying to knock at doors and there's nobody, there's nobody there, you know?
Yeah.
That's understandable, you know, you worked the weekend, you're going to take Monday off, so.
Dean, did you have any? You didn't have any water damage down by here, did you?
No.
No, I checked on him.
Okay.
I was up and down Main Street, doing due diligence.
Okay, perfect.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Todd?
Yeah, while you were in the basements, were you taking note of the type of main?
I wasn't personally, I wasn't personally in the basements. I was out of town that weekend, so, or last weekend, when it happened.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Todd. You've been working a lot, so appreciate you coming by.
Thank you.
All righty, let's move on. Village office updates. Lisa?
We believe, if it's not what, we are finished with the audit work. We kept getting additional requests and so forth with them being new to us. We haven't had any new requests for four days, probably. So we think they have everything. We're just waiting for the final draft from them. We did hold interviews last week for the vacant deputy positions, so we should be hearing from the Sheriff's Office shortly on that. The TIF Annual Review Board was held, which is a statutory requirement. So LRS was here giving updates on where TIF four and five, R six will be reported next Quarterly reports for state and federal. Working with MSA on the comprehensive plan. Like we said, there was a public open house yesterday, a review for the Plan Commission. Notices have gone out. There will be a public hearing in November for, before the Plan Commission meeting. Final recommendations will be made then. It will come to the Village Board at the end of November for final approval. Tammy has been working diligently on preparing for the budget, developers agreement payments, having to go back a couple of years to do that. So those who are in the bill run this afternoon, working on a Westgate project, Scott Farms, the Sampler, Fire Commission, Quick Trip, a lot of things going on. I was asked some questions. I said I would just kind of fill them in during my report. As you know, the road is being done going into the Westgate subdivision. It is expected that that should be done within six weeks, start to finish. It is still DOT plans. The stoplight, that has not changed. I think there's talk out there that it's changed to a roundabout, but it is still the stoplights. Quick Trip, we expect to be submitting their site plans in the next week or so. They will be on the November agenda for Plan Commission for site plan approval. The other lot out there is a commercial lot that the developers have sold. We do not know what's going in there like anything else. When they do make a decision, they'll have to come to us, go through all the processes, procedures, just as any other business would. So we don't know on that yet. Current Quick Trip property, we don't know for sure. Typically, what happens is they close the old one, open the new one at midnight. One closes, the other one opens. Oftentimes, they will take out, take out the tanks at the old property. And then it is up to them if they sell it, what they do with it, if they keep the building up or take the building down as well. But we won't know that until we get further on that. So those were just some of the questions I've been getting about that project. So quick update on where we're at on a number of those things. We...
Currently, the current construction that's being done is for stoplights.
It's for the stoplights, the road, called the sec going in and starting...
But not Quick Trip yet?
No, starting the utility installation as well, water and sewer.
Got you. Thank you.
So forth. And that's all that this board has approved at this point. So that's what's being worked on now.
And how many commercial lots back there?
It would be the two.
It's just two?
Right.
It was Quick Trip and then one other business?
Yep.
We don't know who that is yet?
No.
Okay.
But that other lot, depending on who went in there, they could break it up into separate, is it largely, do we broke up?
Possibly.
Because I think at one time, wasn't, weren't they talking about having like three or four different lots back there?
It's possible, but if they did, they'd have to come to us for CSM. And that, the way it's divided, that lot will be a little more difficult because that's where more of the wetlands and so forth are.
Oh, sure.
So, but if they do decide to do that, they'd have to come before us with those requests. Two final things. We mentioned that Plan Commission yesterday. We met with some people for possible annexation. So we're working with MSA on that. And I was approached by the church up on Main Street to possibly purchase a small sliver of land where the old water tower is, if we'd want to break off a small portion because their building comes up very close to the lot lines. So they wanted a little more room around the building. So that will be on next month's Plan Commission and then to the board, so. Lot of things going on.
All right, so the audit's looking good. We don't...
We're waiting for the draft.
Interrogatory is...
We've got all the information. We were talking today, there have probably been about a hundred different requests of different things. We've sent them over the last couple of months. They have it all. Waiting for it.
All righty. Anything else for Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. All right, now we're going to move on to Tammy. Treasuries report and bills.
I'm going to go over the ones that were over 5,000 first before I give you the first and second run. They are on the sheet that you're signing. $14,010 to 1901, that was for Veterans Park Electrical. $200,852.28, that's Cambridge Development, an incentive payment. $12,005.18 and .33 to Dancing Goat, that's an incentive payment. And then $86.52 and .77 for LRS, formerly Badger Land Disposal. So those are the ones that are over 5, just pay attention to. The first one, run, $25,175.99. The second run, $223,134.41, for a total of $248,310.40. And then the payroll for this week is also, for this last week, is also listed on that sheet. And that was $19,644.36.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $248,310.40? Is that right?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Eric gets it first. Okay. Questions for Lisa or for Tammy? I've got a few. Okay, the $14,000 for the Veterans Park, that's what we're paying and then that will be reimbursed from...
We did get some money from the foundation to help pay for that. I forget the total amount. But we did have a donation from the foundation for that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's in there. Okay, now, on the other ones, the trash collection, that's LRS, formerly Badger Land Disposal. Lisa, this will be for you. How much, how long is our contract with them?
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
I don't recall.
Is that coming up for renewal?
I don't recall often.
Yeah.
I'd have to look.
All righty. Okay, and then we had an incentive payment to Cambridge Development for the $200,000?
That's the winery.
Yeah, all right. And how long and what, where are we at?
Actually, some good news as we're looking at it. They have paid off what they had to pay us is now paid off. So I've been working with Jane, we'll start. We have that one parcel and that gets transferred over to them upon that. So we're working on that. The amount we paid to them with what the taxes are currently, we expect to be paid off within about two years.
That's really good news.
Yes, yes. Today, we were going over it and so...
Well, that's fantastic.
Yeah. So budget will be easier in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Dancing Goat Distillery, the last one here, is $12,005.18?
Yeah, that is a smaller amount. That will take longer. There's still quite a ways to pay off on that.
All right. Okay. Now, those are the questions that I had here for bills. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Chris Phelps?
Yes.
Brian Egg?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right, bills are paid. All right, thank you. Okay, new business, first up, Resolution 2023-09, Jefferson County exemption from the county library tax. Is this going to be Lisa or is this going to be Paula?
This is our annual, we do this, it's included in what we collect in taxes instead of the county collecting taxes. So they give us the minimum appropriation that needs to be put on our tax roll and...
We've been doing this, so...
Yep, yep. Otherwise, the county would tax and...
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2023, Tax 09, Jefferson County exemption from county library tax.
I'll second.
We have a motion and then a second for the exemption from the Jefferson County Library Tax. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, moving right on. Eight B, same thing, only now we're talking about Dane County.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2023, Tax 10, Dane County exemption from county library tax.
I'll second.
All right. Concerns, issues? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All righty, moving on. Item eight C, Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department Emergency Medical Responder Application.
I did get a phone call today asking if we pulled this from the agenda today. They'll let us know when they're ready to have it back on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay, there's nothing further.
What is this?
They were going to be here to explain.
Oh, okay.
They were applying with the state, but they will.
Okay, all right. And we'll just move on. All right, item eight D, Jay Weiss, measuring of trees. Lisa?
Jay had contacted Mark, asking, last year, we had given him permission to measure the trees in the village terraces. He did want to do that again. We went back, looked last year, we did approve it. We gave him a timeline that it had to be done with. Dane had provided an agreement that included, I'll hold harmless, with the village, with stipulation he had to let us know when he was going to be out doing it. So if the village is getting phone calls, he does want to do it again. So it's on the agenda for discussion.
You might recall the discussion last year was that once he, once Mr. Weiss no longer was a village employee, then he doesn't get the same sort of governmental immunities that he would have previously. So we want to make sure that, you know, that he's supervised, but normally, we want somebody who's acting as a volunteer to be supervised by village staff. We want to make sure they're, they've got some sort of agreement in place and insurance coverage to offset the liability risk that a private individual performing these tasks would pose.
And then we'd want to make sure we reiterate to him that is for trees that are in the terraces only, not to be going onto people's properties and measuring. There was a question about whether that was done last year.
Did you write up the agreement then, Jane?
We did an agreement with him last year.
Okay.
And I do have a copy of that. If the board does approve it, we will change the date soon.
All right.
I'll make a motion to allow Jay Weiss to measure the trees on the terrace with our legal counsel drawing up the appropriate paperwork for insurance and indemnity purposes.
I'll second.
When I talked to Jay, it seemed like this year, he has insurance. And I don't know if he had it last year, he just indemnified us.
He provided it. We just want to make sure that it's not just covering him personally, that it would also indemnify the village. So we'll just make sure to combine that insurance with an agreement.
All right.
And just as a note, last year, I know we put a timeframe on it, when it, when he could do it. His insurance policy that he provided does go through February 7th of 2024.
So with, can I amend my motion to say with all measuring to be done before February 7th of 2024?
You approve that, Chuck?
Yes, I'll second.
All right, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Jay is naturally proud of the canopy that we have here in the village. He just wants to measure it and I don't know who he reports it to.
He's got an online thing he does.
And that is one thing we did say last year, too, that all the measurements he's doing on the village tree should be relayed to the village. All that information should be shared there, village trees.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Let's move on. Item E, conditional use permit for Charles Fiesel.
Plan Commission tabled that item, so we can skip it until he comes back to Plan Commission with more details.
All right, okay.
To kind of expand on that, you know, we want him to come back with plans, a site plan. And also, we asked him to come back with an alternate plan that has parking, you know, that doesn't have the drive-through. So we're not holding them up, you know, a little bit more efficient, so.
Main concerns were the parking.
Parking, yeah, that's a big issue, so.
He had mentioned that, you know, if he could only get so many spots, he might reduce the number of apartments. Well, that's something we wanted to know prior to approving the conditional use permit, how many apartments are going in and no.
The other question that I would have for you guys to ask is what is going to be the end height of the building? Because I know he says it's not going to be higher than any other building, but, but our street goes like this. So if this one is going to be as tall as this one up here, that's going to be too tall for us to perhaps firefight without a ladder truck? And we don't want to have to get into that issue.
I did speak to the fire chief. He said any fire call on Main Street, they're going to be calling for mutual aid. Older buildings, they're all attached and a ladder truck would be coming through mutual aid.
Okay.
So that wasn't as much of a concern, but that's part of him coming back with the plans, so we know exactly how high it is.
Okay, great, thank you.
The building will be sprinkled. It will have a sprinkler system as part of it.
So he's retrofitting it?
Yeah, yeah.
The top floor, I don't know that the lower floor.
It just seemed to me when I was watching the Planning Commission, all six commission members were concerned with the parking.
It's huge.
So hopefully, he picked up on that and he'll come up with a plan. And, you know, that's almost, you got to have that with, before you even get started because you could spend a lot of money on architectural or engineering drawings, so.
You're talking about just on that plow then, where he's at? He wants the building on top of that?
No, the hotel next door.
The building next to the plow.
Oh, the one next door to it?
Yep.
We will be beginning on the plow, though. There's a little expansion to do, just a little small, that's starting soon.
He hasn't come in for permits for that yet, but said he will be coming.
Okay. All right, nothing further on this, so we'll move on. Item eight F, the L-RIP recommendation. Who's got this?
I'll take it. So I'll give you a little recap on how we got to Allen and Darlesburg. So originally, we were looking at Springwater Alley. You know, it's in a poor state right now, but we wanted that on the FY24 L-RIP grant. But because it is an alley, it doesn't qualify. So at the last meeting, we tried to redesignate it as a road, but due to its width, was it 24 feet? It's an alley.
For our ordinances, the width, it is an alley. It is not a street.
So at this time, it's not going to make the cut for next year. So it's kind of, that's on hold. We're still looking into it. Maybe later on, we could maybe redesignate it and get it on FY25 L-RIP, but that's on hold. And then we started looking at the next, the rest of the roads that are in a poor condition for Todd's Whistler rankings. So we have Highland, these are all ranked as twos. So 10 is the best, 1 is the worst. So we have Highland, these are all ranked as twos, so 10's the best, 1's the worst. Highland's a two, Allen and Jarlsberg are all twos. Highland, so what we wanna do is some preventive maintenance there. So we want to do a chip seal to kind of match what the Town of Christiana did on their side. And it looks really nice and it's a lot less expensive. It's a fraction of the cost, so we kinda wanna start moving into preventative maintenance instead of having to wait till it's a one and total disrepair where we have to pull out hundreds of thousands to rebuild them. So that's the kind of the direction we want. That's what we're gonna do with Highland, if it works out with the budget. So then we've got Allen and Jarlsberg, pretty rough shape, so we wanna put those on for the LRIP grant for most likely a full reconstruction. So that's how we got to that. We're tracking every single road, you know, and we're kinda with that, that preventive maintenance. We're gonna, we wanna look at when they hit like a four or three, start doing that preventative maintenance so they don't get to the point where we have to pull out that huge loan. Does that make sense? Oh, because, does that make sense?
Yeah, so just, so Jarlsberg, if you're gonna redo that, I mean, that's the only entrance for one, two, three, four houses?
Why they're doing that, they always set up to allow people to come in and out.
Okay, alright, great, thank you.
Because that's a, that's a grind down all the rise and.
And, and that's really just a cul-de-sac, so it's, yeah, driving in and driving out, okay?
Alright, well, I'll make a motion to approve Allen Street and Jarlsberg for the LRIP grant for FY24.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Any concerns, questions?
We're gonna be talking about, you know, audit finance, you know, applying some funds to a preventive maintenance plan. If we can make it work, I think we would save a lot of money. That's something we can hash out Thursday.
Got a lot of, lot to hash out on Thursday?
Yeah, I know, I know. I don't wanna be react, I'm trying to be proactive here, you know? Yep.
Okay, now we got a motion, a second, so all those in favor of the LRIP recommendations? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, okay, good job, Chuck. Appreciate that. Uh, let's move on. Item 9A, Fire Commission update.
Fire Commission update, most of it we'll cover in a closed session, but IGA enforcement, working on transparency when it comes to our taxpayers here in Cambridge and what we pay to the commission. And we do have a meeting scheduled for the 18th of October at 6:30. Where it's gonna be at is yet to be determined.
And what is that one?
That is a meeting of the whole, just to go over, I don't, I haven't seen an agenda yet.
Oh, we don't know what the agenda is yet, okay, at 6:30?
6:30.
And you don't know where you're at?
No, I think Secretary Treasurer recommended Cambridge, but I don't know.
We'd have to check the, the, the.
Yeah.
Okay, I know we'll be talking about more of this when we go into closed session, so.
Mm-hmm.
Anything open?
Anything for me?
Yeah. Okay, alright, thank you. Correspondence, we have none. 11, questions, referrals of staff, future agenda items. We've got three items on here. Dancing Goat sampling, school district update, and the comprehensive plan.
Again, the sampling will be at water and sewer next week for recommendation to the board. Superintendent asked to be at our next meeting to give an update. Comprehensive plan will do the public hearing at Plank Mission in November and to the final board for approval, the last meeting in November. And then like I mentioned, we, depending on the timing, the possible annexation and the sale of the village land are two additional items.
Two things, I know you talked about the Quick Trip plan probably coming in in November timeframe. Can we make sure that some, some kind of conversation around that happens about the welcome sign that we were hoping to be able to place on the signs?
That did come up last night and, yeah, that will be when we.
And, and then are they planning to put sidewalk on their property even though it can't? Because it would be nice if the sidewalk could extend from where it ends at Subway all the way around that curve at some point in the future, so hoping they put in sidewalk?
That was part of our discussion with Westgate, so.
Alright, so that was all I had.
Anything else anybody wanna put on for future agenda?
If possible, could we maybe get an update on the status of the website?
Yes. Yes. We were just talking about that as well. We have a list of names. We will be sending things out and.
Excellent.
Okay, moving on to item 12, upcoming meetings. We will have personnel here October 12, along with audit and finance.
Oh, yes, 12.
Yes, October 17, water and sewer. Village Board will meet again October 24th, November 8th, Library Board. November 13th, Plan Commission, and November 14th, Village Board.
We do have Library Board tomorrow night as well.
Library Board is tomorrow as well, yep.
Alright, okay. That takes us up to item 12A.
I'll make a motion to convene into closed sessions per Wisconsin.